Welcome to the January meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education. My name is Robert Tempario, Vice President of the Board, and in Dr. Mason's absence, I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. So the first item on the agenda is a verification of the meeting notice.
Actually, the mission statement.
Oh, I almost forgot. See, already. The mission statement for the district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Now we can verify the meeting notice.
Yes, it was, the agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader and posted at the Lake Mills Library, Post Office, and Bank of Lake Mills on December 28th, and was also posted on the district website.
Thank you. If you'll join me and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderstood, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any revisions?
Call to order, sorry.
Look at that. Oh for two. Now we have to call a meeting to order. Wow. And I have a roll call.
Donna Delaney.
Here.
Rachel Davies.
Here.
Donna Thomas.
Here.
Robert Tempario.
Here. Now, can I go on?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda. Look for a motion to approve it or offer any revisions.
I move to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries forward or nothing. The next item is community input. Do we have anyone who is registered to speak?
Not that has registered.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
No.
Okay, then we'll move into the board reports. Mr. Knippel.
Lake Mills High School is having a busy winter. The Lake Mills men's basketball team is eight and three, and they're on a four-game winning streak, and the girls' basketball team is two and seven. Forensic tryouts are just two weeks from now, so everyone hoping to be on the team are practicing their pieces. The student council just held a new event that we called Class Competitions, which included a food eating contest, which was pretty entertaining to watch, and through those class competitions, we raised money for the mill, which is the pantry within the school. And the wrestling team is off to a fast start. According to fellow wrestler Cooper Buckles, the new coach has ignited a newfound fire within the wrestlers. And lastly, band orchestra and choir held their concerts, which were big successes. Overall, Lake Mills High School students are excited to finish the semester strong and continue to exceed expectations.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Ms. Davies.
Okay, so I will be attending the WASBA next week, and I will be representing our board. And so in the board packet this month, my computer's like won't click to the next thing. Okay. You should have, you should see the PDF of the resolutions that were forwarded by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and the ones that we'll be taking up and voting on during the convention next week. And I didn't really see anything, I mean, I feel like, you know, after three years, I know you all pretty well, and we, most of the things that have come up or that are here have come up in some shape or form in our conversations and our committee meetings or in our board meetings, so that I have a pretty good feel of the pulse of this board. I also feel like we're very education-centered, very student and environment and teacher-centered. So I didn't see anything terribly controversial. That, for the first year I did it, there was one or two that was, that was pretty up there, but this time, I think I will represent us very well. And if you have any comments or any concerns about anything you do see, please feel free to pull me aside and let me know. Yes.
I just wanted to add that there is a resolution that addresses voucher transparency.
Yes.
And that was the issue that the LMEA had spoken to us about at two different meetings, so I wanted to assure them that although we did not pass a resolution ourselves about that, you will represent us.
Yes.
From Lake Mills.
Very much so.
In that area.
And there's one for teacher certification and licensure as well. Yes.
Any other comments? Then we will move into the administrative reports. Ms. Brockert.
Hi, I am very pleased to introduce Wendy Unger from Baker Tilly. I think she's presented to this board in the past, but I welcome her to present our audit highlights.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here this evening. You should have in front of you three reports plus a handout. I will use the handout. It's the Cliff Notes version of the other documents that you have to go through this information at a relatively high level. If you do have any questions, please feel free to ask as I move through the presentation. I have included my contact information at the very end, though. If there are items you'd like to talk about in more detail, I'll be happy to do so at a later date. To begin on the first page, again, the objective of the audit was to issue an opinion on the financial statements for the school district. As part of that audit process, we issue three reports. Again, the three reports you have in front of you today. One is your audited financial statements, which are labeled as such. You also have a report on federal and state awards, which is a compliance audit that we'll touch on briefly at the end. And you also have before you a document that's called Communication with Those Charged with Governance and Management. I'm going to go through each of those again at a relatively high level, but beginning on the bottom of the first page of the presentation, I've highlighted the audit opinion. Again, our objective was to issue that opinion. We've done so. We've issued a clean, unmodified opinion, highest level of assurance that you can obtain from your auditors. And really, what does that mean for the district and for you as the board? That means that the information that's contained within the audited statements is believed to be materially accurate, that all accounting policies and principles have been adhered to based on the standards that we follow, that generally accepted accounting principles have been adhered to, and that, again, principles have been applied consistently from year to year. We will, towards the end of the presentation, you had several new governmental accounting standards that were effective for the district for this year. Those are GASP, so I'm sure we've talked about those in the past, but unfortunately, there's not been a year lately that those haven't been pretty important. So we'll talk about what the impact of those. So when you do look at your audit opinion, you will note in Emphasis of Matters paragraph, noting that there were three new standards that were effective for this year. And again, we'll talk about in a moment what those are for. On the next page, I've put together some very high-level financial information. I'm going to give you some page numbers as we go through this, so you can look at this information in more detail at your leisure. But the first column there is the general fund. This can be found on page 44 in a budget-to-actual presentation. Your general fund is your day-to-day operating fund. This is where you account for most of your activity. The general fund had 15.6 million of actual revenue compared to a little bit over a $15 million but actual expenditures. You also have some other sources and uses, and what that really means is these are things that fall a little bit out of the day-to-day operation. So these are like the transfer that goes out of your general fund into your special education fund to help fund operations. So that's a majority of that. You also did have a capital lease that was entered into, the district entered into during the year, roughly $57,000 lease that comes through as a other financing source also. So overall, the general fund for FY '17 had a decrease in fund balance of 1.2 million. If you go to the very bottom of that page, you'll notice an actual-to-budget presentation. So when the board and the management put together the FY '17 budget, you had budgeted to use a little bit of over $900,000. So you used a little bit more than what you had anticipated, and really, there's a couple different reasons. If you look at that very first row down below, your actual revenues were under budget. The largest piece of that, there was some state aid that was budgeted for to the tune of roughly $114,000 that was not ultimately received during 2017. So that is one of the reasons. And then expenditures were over budget by $320,000. If you look at that page 44, you'll see the various functional categories, and some are over and some are under. There's nothing that really kind of jumps out at you for the year. So again, used up $294,000 more than what you had anticipated and had a little bit over $4 million of fund balance as of the end of the year. Still a very strong financial position for the general fund. You'll note in that table that's right under that top column, 14.7 million. What we typically look to see is reserves or monies available for spending somewhere between 10% and 25% of next year's operating budget or even the current year operating budget. You're at approximately 28%, so you're still on the high side, so in a good position within your general fund as of the end of the year. There's a little bit of that fund balance, that 4 million, that is referred to as non-spendable, a little bit over $3,000, and those are some prepaid items. So you've paid for them in FY '17, but they don't relate to '17. They relate to '18 and will get expensed and come out of fund balance then. The next columns at the top of the page, the next four columns are on page eight in detail. The first column there is your special education fund, a little bit over $1 million of revenue. That's all federal and state funds that come in to help fund your special education program. You had $2.7 million of expenditures within the special ed program, and then the difference is subsidized by the general fund, and that's that 1.7 million of other financing sources and uses that I spoke about previously. Your special education fund had zero fund balance, and that is what it has to have per DPI guidelines. Your next column is your food service fund. This is your Fund 50. It counts for the revenue that's received through the food program, and this includes not only student revenue but also federal and state funding. You had 651,000 of expenditures under that program. Prior to a transfer in from the general fund of 48,000, that was operating at a deficit. So at the end of FY '17, your food service program had a zero fund balance based on that transfer in to cover that deficit. Your next column is your debt service fund. This is where you account for the debt service activity of the district, accounts for the principal and interest, 2.4 million of revenue that comes in through your property tax levies, 2.4 million of expenses. Used up a little bit of fund balance, 29,000, and had $852,000 of fund balance as of the end of the year. That 852 is a little bit different than what you have in your general fund. Those monies are restricted. They have to be used for debt service purposes until the debt of the district would be paid in full, and at that time, they may be utilized for other meth, or for other reasons. The next column is your capital project fund. Had 150,000 in revenue, again, all tax levy, 150,000 of expenses. And the largest expenses that I noted in there, you did some sidewalk works, work. You bought the Ranger. You also had the cameras that were purchased towards the end of the year. In total, used up, again, a little bit of fund balance, $934,000, and had 90, I'm sorry, $21,000 of fund balance left as of the end of the year to be used for additional capital-type items. The final column on this page is titled "Nonmajor." These can be found on page 53 of your financial statements, and these are the remaining two funds of the district. This is your Fund 21 and your Fund 80, so your gift, your donation fund, and your community service fund. Those two funds combined had $304,000 of revenue. Most of that, $258,000, is your community service. So most of that is generated through that program. 371,000 of expenses, again, used up some fund balance and had 97,000 for the total of those two funds as of the end of the year. Your Fund 21 had $9,500 of fund balance, and the remaining difference of 87,000 is in your Fund 80. Turning to the next page, again, this is where I continue with some more financial information, and this is where we'll touch briefly on the new Gaspys. What I've highlighted on the top of the page is the long-term obligations of the district. In addition to what you would think is normal debt, your general obligation borrowings that you do, there are additional items. And as noted here, at June 30th of '17, 29.7 million of general obligation bonds were outstanding. There was no new debt during 2017, and you paid down approximately 1.6 million of existing debt. And again, those were monies that would have came through that debt service fund. Your capital lease balance as of the end of the year was 70,000. You had $57,000 new lease. You paid off 57,000, so that number is relatively consistent with the previous year. The next three rows are, again, the ones that are a little bit new and different, and the numbers may look and feel a little bit different. So during FY '17, the district was required to implement GASP 73. So GASP 73 addresses pensions. So your pension, that is not WRS-related, is now required to have an actuarial study, which it had always been, but now the amount that gets recorded in your financial statements is the total unfunded amount, where in the past, it was a figure that was an annual required contribution, less your pay as your go amount, and it accumulated, but that started at a certain point in time. GASP says, nope, we're not going to do that anymore. We want to know, we want to have shown on the face of your statements, what do you truly owe for your, those different types of benefits? So under your pension obligation, again, the single employer benefit, 1.6 million is what's recorded on your topside statements. So none of this change affects how you necessarily manage the organization. It doesn't change your day-to-day funds, but it is something you need to be aware of because these are, if everything plays out the way the actuaries have laid it out, this is what it's going to cost the district over the life of those benefits. Also, there's extensive new footnotes because of these new governmental accounting standards. So the single employer pension, that can be found on page 38 of the footnotes. The next line item, the net pension liability, WRS, this was one that came on board a couple years ago. This is in reference to GASP 68. And GASP 68 said all multiple employer plans, each participant has to determine what their share of that plan is and record, again, a liability or an asset on their books. This is the Wisconsin retirement system. This is the district's share of that liability. This is determined via actuarial studies done by the Wisconsin retirement system, and then that information is shared with each participant. So this is not only school districts but municipalities, anybody that participates in that. As of the end of the year, $442,000 was your liability. Now, a little bit different than the GASP 73, your pension, and what we'll talk about in a second on your OPEB, that Wisconsin retirement system has significant investments. In fact, Wisconsin retirement system is really almost 100% funded. So that number will fluctuate between an asset and a liability, and I believe the first year of '68, it was an asset on the district's books, and then the last two years, it is now a liability. That will fluctuate as the investment activity. So if the WRS, the system ends on a good year, which is based on a calendar year-end, if investments are doing well, that number will swing to an asset. It's not an asset you have a right to. It's not necessarily a liability you have to pay, but again, it shows what your proportionate share of that program is. Lastly there, that other post-employment benefits during 2017, GASP 74 and 75 came into place. 75 would technically have been applicable for FY '18, but as long as we were implementing 74, we implemented it all, and now you're done with Gaspys for maybe a year. But again, what GASP 74 and 75 did, it did the same thing that the pension did for 73. It required the total unfunded liability to be shown on your topside statements. The only difference between 73 and 75 is the 74 piece, which requires your trust, because you have an OPEB trust, that number to be netted against that unfunded liability. So when you look at this, you have 2.4 million of OPEB obligations. If you didn't net that trust, that number would be $250,000 higher. So you have $250,000 of money set aside in a trust that you can't touch, and it can only be used for OPEB. So overall, the liability's 34 million. So those numbers will look high compared to last year, again, because of that change in accounting methodology. One last item to note on the financial statement side, the district has the ability to borrow 10% of your equalized value. That equates to 94.9 million. You have 29.7 million outstanding, so you have borrowing capacity of slightly over 65 million if you so choose to do so. Switching gears then, going on to the other document, you have the Communication with Those Charged with Governance. This document really allows us to communicate comments and recommendations that come up as part of the audit process. Very happy to say that there's been some great progress made on the comments that were there in the previous years. There's a couple lingering ones, but I know that management is working on those, and they've either been addressed or will be addressed before next audit. There does continue to be two material weaknesses. One is regarding the internal control environment. That's noted on pages two and three of your document and lays out in a little bit more detail the areas that we looked at, which would be your accounts payable, your payroll, month-end close, and really looking at it from a segregation of duties standpoint. So just really taking a look at that and recommending some additional controls that could be put into place. Internal control over financial reporting is because we, as the auditors, prepare the financial statements. We did have one material journal entry this year, which related to some booking of some additional accounts payable compared to numerous entries in the previous year. So we saw great progress made during the year. The other comments and recommendations, again, we show on there any carryovers. We also show the ones that were addressed. There were three new ones. The ones that we looked at were related to credit card purchases and employee expense reimbursements, and really just making sure that a proper support and approval are done by tho, are either included or done by somebody. And again, I think all that is already in motion, but during the year, we did, we select a sample. So the full year is subject to testing, and there were some issues found, again, nothing that we found to be, you know, not appropriate, but just lacking support. The last portion of that letter is our required communication. So we are required, under our standards, to have some customary communication with you. You'll note in there, it does highlight the material entry. It does talk about the new Gaspys, but other than that, there's nothing in there that I need to draw your attention to because there's nothing that is of a negative situation. Last, on the last page of the presentation, again, noting the report on federal and state awards. The district expends over a little bit over $900,000 of federal money, 8.9 million of state money. And because you expend over 750,000 in federal money, we are required to do a federal compliance audit. State of Wisconsin requires us to do all kinds of audits. We don't get away with not doing that, no matter if you have a federal audit or not. But during the year, we looked at the special education program on the federal side. We are also required on the state side to look at the special education program along with general equalization aid and your per pupil aid that you receive during the year. And again, that's dictated by DPI. They tell us you have to look at that, and we look at that. I'm very happy to say there is, you'll note in the report, there is one finding, but it's related to internal control over compliance because of the segregation of duties surrounding the payroll, because payroll is such a large portion of those grants. So again, no compliance findings, just the internal control finding that we noted during the year. So a good, clean audit from that perspective. As I noted when I began, my contact information is included here. I'm happy to talk about any of this information with any of you, but I'd also be happy to answer any questions that you have. Again, went through that relatively quick, perhaps not quick enough.
Any questions?
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you very much. The next report will be from Mr. Vogel.
Good evening. I have a short report for you. To start off, the third week of December before break, we finished off our PATA presentations to all of our classes. Again, PATA is the Jefferson County Group, People Against Domestic and Sexual Abuse. We're also going to bring PATA back here in February, February 2nd, I believe, to do an information table in regard to teen dating. Violence Awareness Month is in February, so again, they're going to provide an information table during lunchtime a day or two during the first week in February. Our seniors are starting to work, complete their portfolios. We have certain deadlines that they have to meet within their advisory class or advisory time the next month or two to complete those. Like Blaise said, we have the first semester coming up with exams, exam week next week. As far as future events coming up, January 29th is our Future Freshman Night, so our teachers are going to be working on that soon, probably the week after exams. February 19th to the 24th is FFA Week. Coming up in February also, we have our ACT testing and work keys testing for our juniors. Reminder too that freshmen and seniors have off those days, but our sophomores, the first day are going to go on college visits. We're taking the sophomores to three different schools, Madison Edgewood, MATC, and UBU Madison, so they get kind of the gamut of opportunities for them after high school. And then the second day, the sophomores are going to take the pre-ACT test, kind of a practice, practice ACT test to get them ready and prepared for their junior year. Just a couple things this week. We have a first wrestling home meet against Pecatonica on Thursday at 7:00, and then our boys are at Lakeside for basketball on Thursday night. Easy to make both of them. Wrestling shouldn't take that long with only five wrestlers. And then Friday night, the girls are at home against Pointe. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Vogel?
I have one question. Are the portfolios still being done on paper? Are they starting to be turned over to be more digital?
It's still on paper, but we are incorporating some of the ACP products into the portfolio, but it's still kind of traditional right now.
Okay. Thank you.
I was able to review a portfolio for a student that's graduating at semester, and it's very different than the portfolios in the past. So for all of us who help do that, we're going to need to go through a training because it's quite a bit different.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Bauer.
Good evening. I just want to update a couple of things that are, we are doing, continuing along our theme of community building in the middle school. I haven't mentioned this before, but a former student of ours, Dane Wollene, now goes by Dane S. Athu, came in and did a project with the eighth graders on social innovation. So every year in science, the kids pick an innovation project to do, but he came in and added something that Mr. Cliff and I had been looking for, and that's how do you take your scientific innovation and give back to society with it? So he worked with the kids for four days. He does social-emotional growth with them, understanding who they are as human beings, and then moves into developing this social innovation project. He goes to other schools then and does the same thing, and he picks a couple of the projects to take to the finals. So he worked originally with all 130 students over four days, and now he is working with four or five individual groups to do a social innovation competition, which will be held at the Museum of Modern Art in Madison, I think in March. So again, that theme of how we give back to our community and stuff is running through a lot of the things that we do. We are also doing a kickball tournament this month with our advisories, something fun, but something to get together over on these cold winter days. And then just a reminder about the book study that we're in the middle of. We're doing a book study on equity. Staff were given several opportunities, one to read or to listen to The Hate U Give. There's a book called Far From the Tree that they could read several excerpts from. The Distance Between Us was another book they had an option to read. Katie Kurick put out a really great video. She paired, partnered with National Geographic to put out a really great video called Gender Revolution. And then I bought a book called Equity Practices in the Classroom, and if staff don't, would prefer not to read a book, they can try to implement five equity practices from that book in their classroom and then report out on that for the book study. That'll be coming up in February. My hope is that half the day will be spent discussing what we learned from those equity things, and then we are inviting middle school students back that have graduated and are dealing with some equity issues to express how they felt middle school went for them as they were dealing with these things. So I think it'll be a real eye-opener for the staff. It'll be great for all of us, I think. Outside of the community stuff, we are also doing active shooter training. So that will be coming up at the end of January here. And then we are doing a little something different with course selection this year. We are working through Skyward. You probably remember the age-old forms that you used to get home, and you'd check off the boxes and quick try to get them in the basket first to register for your middle school classes, but now we've run it all through Skyward. This isn't, we aren't doing- This isn't, we aren't doing our scheduling through Skyward yet. We're taking a baby step and just having parents make course selections through Skyward so we can get the counts and different things that way. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Ms. Thompson.
Good evening. I just have a couple of updates today. We kicked off the new school, or the new year, 2018 with our Good Character Assembly. The whole school gathered together in a rainbow of colors. Each grade level had a different color and the bleachers were filled in a rainbow. And we thought about all of our school rules and why we have school rules. I read the story of what if everybody did that is a fun way for kids to realize why it's important to follow our school rules. Couple of upcoming PTO events. On January 26th at 6 o'clock, they will be hosting movie night at the elementary gym. Our students will be voting on what movie that will be later this week, either Wednesday or Thursday. And then, on February 2nd, PTO will be sponsoring a STEM assembly. Those will be in the afternoon during the school day, and the theme this year is capturing chemistry. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
Hello. I just have a couple of things for you. I just wanted to update you on our self-assessment. We completed that last month with about five of us from the Special Education Department. There are four areas that we reviewed, evaluation, the IEP components, implementation, and discipline, and we were compliant in all of those areas except for just a couple indicators in the IEP portion of it. And that really focused on making sure we had one part of the IEP written in another section of that. So, pretty minor details, but we've already addressed those issues as a staff and will continue to work on that to make sure we're meeting the compliance indicators. And then, one other section, or one other piece I wanted to share with you is before winter break, I applied for an internship for the elementary Special Education Department, and we were approved of that. So, we are actively trying to fill that intern job, I guess I would call it. So, that's it.
Any questions? Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Seabrook.
Good evening. Just a couple of things. We got the Educator Effectiveness Grant, Educator Effectiveness Grant from DPI, which is something that the state gives to us for, to help pay for the teacher evaluation system that they require us to use, which is really nice for them to help offset that cost. And then, I have a proclamation to read to you from the governor, no, from DPI, sorry. So, it's a proclamation. Whereas, Wisconsin's adult school crossing guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, children walking between home and school. And whereas, adult school crossing guards typically serve with a dedication that discounts the rigors of harsh weather. Let me tell you, Friday really proved that. Split shifts and heavy traffic. And whereas, for more than five decades, adult school crossing guards have served communities across Wisconsin, and that service has helped drive down the rates of young pedestrian deaths and injuries despite increases in traffic volume. And whereas, adult school crossing guards add to the effectiveness of the student safety patrol members with whom they often serve and whose activity they help direct. And whereas, adult school crossing guards help reinforce in the minds of young people they assist, the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior. Therefore, be it resolved that January 22nd through 26th, 2018, be declared Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week in the state of Wisconsin. I would like to publicly thank Kathy, Suzie, Roseanne, Mike, Christie, and our most faithful sub Trudy for their work that they do as crossing guards to keep our children safe every day, especially in the minus 10 degree weather, minus 30 degree wind chill weather that we had last week, and hope that we do not have that anymore this winter. So, they are very much appreciated, and I'd also like to thank the chief of police who brought them all coffee Friday morning, as I was out there too, because he thought it was so cold, and that was very much appreciated. And it's always fun to see those kids off to school. So, just like to mention, January 23rd, Melissa and I are joining forces, and we are going to be training our secretaries, bus drivers, food service, and custodians on the seven essential ingredients of trauma-sensitive schools. And we are also having, I Ready is the new assessment that replaced MAP and grades three through five. They are coming out and training us a little bit more on how to use the reports and how to use the instruction a little bit more that day, the day before actually, also. Any questions?
No, thank you very much. And I think we can second your appreciation of our crossing guards because they do work in some pretty extreme conditions.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Strick.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to talk about the upcoming election. We have five candidates running for two open positions. Those that are running are Donna Thomas, Rachel Ruglitz-Davies, Jason Drost, David Radell, and Ken Stetson. So, because there are five people running for just two openings, we are required to have a primary. So, that will be held Tuesday, February 20th. And we are required at this time to put the names into, we're going to use this bag, and between Dr. Delaney and Mr. D'Imperio, if you could choose those names, and the order in which you choose them will be the order in which their name, these names will appear on the ballot. So, I don't know how you want to go about this.
Oh, boy. The first name is Mr. Radell. Next name is Dr. Thomas. Next name is Mr. Stetson. The next name is Mr. Drost. And Ms. Davies.
Okay. Could you pass these down to Megan? Last year, we were asked to do a yearly update on the number of donations that had been made, excuse, the total in donations. And so, at year end, we totaled up and the donations to our district that were recorded for the year 2017 was just over $30,000. So, that's amazing, and so, we thank our community for supporting our students and staff and all the educational processes in the district. And finally, I wanted to remind you that on January 29th, we'll be having a special meeting, and we're going to include it during that time, a workshop with, about facilities. So, that will include representatives from Myron Construction, EUA, and also Rutler Corporation will be here as well. So, that meeting will begin at 6 o'clock on January 29th.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Strick? Yes.
I think we missed one of the donations to the, to the band, middle school band. The Madison Area Music Association had donated, I think, $700.
Check on that and get that fixed. That will be posted on the website too, so that everyone can check that out. Thank you for finding that.
Okay. So, we can move into the action items. The first is the approval of the December 11th, 2017 Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes.
I move the board approve the minutes of the December 11th, 2017 Regular School Board, or Regular Board of Education Meeting. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. May we have a roll call, please?
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
That motion carries, four to zero. The next item is the approval of the December 11th, 2017 Finance Committee Proceedings.
I move the board approve the proceedings of the December 11th, 2017 Finance Committee Meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, questions? May we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
That carries four to nothing. The next is the approval of the vouchers and invoices.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,296,105.51 for the month of December 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Hearing none. We have a roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
The next item is the approval of the treasurer's report.
I move the board approve the treasurer's report for the month of December 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
That motion carries four to zero. The next item is the approval of the crossing guards' compensation for holidays and sick leaves, sick leave days earned under the employee handbook.
It's come to our attention that there were errors made in the recording of sick days and also compensation for holidays as described in the employee handbook for our crossing guards. So, we want to correct all of those errors, including those crossing guards who are no longer employed with us as well.
I move approval of crossing guard compensation for holidays and sick leave days earned underneath the employee handbook.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
That motion carries. The next item is the, is action on the resolutions at the upcoming Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention. And as you heard from Ms. Davies' report, she will be representing the district at that convention, and there is a proposed motion to give her latitude to vote.
I move the board give Ms. Davies the latitude to vote on the WASB resolutions at the upcoming 2018 WASB Convention in the best interest of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Epstein.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
That motion carries three to zero with one abstention. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the bike trail construction plans on district property. At our December meeting, this item was tabled, and I think the first order of business is to entertain a motion to take it off the table.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. There is no discussion on a motion to remove from the table, so I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
If you recall, at the last meeting, there was a concern about the proposed bike path and that element of the bike path that passed by our southern boundary on the property-owned south of town. And at the time, Mr. Wilkey was present, the city manager, and he indicated that they would be looking at a way to correct that situation. Since we had the meeting, the city has moved that bike path out of our property and within the right-of-way of a proposed roadway, unsavven way, which will be developed at some point in the future. We had an opportunity to review that as the Facilities Committee, and we also asked our consultant with Myron Construction, Greg Douglas, to take a look at that. And again, the biggest concern that we had was whether our potential ingress or egress to the site would be, would have, we'd have any issues. We communicated to the city that we continue to have some concerns, and in a conversation, the city, the discussion with, between our district administrator and Mr. Wilkey, decided that there would be a memorandum of understanding where we would be able to have access to our site in the most unimpeded way possible. And based on those changes and the modified drawings, and I think a set of those drawings was included in your board packet, we conclude that the, that southern element of the bike path is no longer within the school property. We have identified that our concerns as far as the access are going to be dealt with in a memorandum of understanding, and we have prepared a motion, which is rather lengthy, but I think addresses that situation. And so, I would entertain that motion or another at this particular point.
So, once we make the motion, then we can talk about it. Okay. I move the board approve the modified drawing for the bike trail on the district property on Highway 89 and authorize the district administrator to finalize all necessary paperwork. It is understood that the new easement will reflect use of the district land on the east side of the property, only with the bike trail on the south border of the district property placed in the right-of-way. In addition, the board will receive a memo of understanding from the city of Lake Mills that confirms that as the property develops, unsavven will be installed as an urban cross-section with the bike path relocated to the south of the new street if necessary. Further final utilities would be installed in the right-of-way at South Main Street and unsavven.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion and questions?
So, it was, so, now it's moved off of the property, but it would move back onto the property if unsavven? No.
If, it would move into the right-of-way of the north of the proposed extension of unsavven road.
Okay.
If that would impede our ability, if we needed to put a driveway there, we could cross over that potentially. But if needed, the city would be willing to move it to the south side of the road, which would then be on the St. Paul's School property.
Okay.
So, that it would cross unsavven at a different location, if that makes sense.
So, we believe that the concerns that we had have been, have been addressed, understanding that the future of that property is unknown, but we think we have done the best that we could to ensure that we can utilize that property and that there is, that the only permanent easement will occur at the eastern edge of the property.
This is about the best we can do, isn't it?
I think it is. I think that, I think that it is.
I think our feeling is that the city really worked quickly to address our concerns that we brought up in December. There were all the drawings done that have been sent with you. Mr. Wilkey was in, you know, immediate conversation and addressed each of our concerns, and I think that, I think it was a good working relationship.
So, if there are no other questions, I would ask for the roll call vote, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio.
Aye.
That motion carries four to zero. The next item is the approval of the 2018, 2019 High School Course Description Book.
This was the handbook that was shared with you last month by Mr. Vogel. He outlined the changes to that book.
So, entertain a motion for that approval?
I move the board approve the Lake Mills High School Course Description Book for the 2018 High School Course Description Book. 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. May we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
That motion carries. The next item is the approval of support staff letters of assignment.
Well, we have three of them this month. First of all, as you may recall, we, you gave us the permission to create a new position called Recreation Supervisor to help with our growing recreation department. We found a, I think, really outstanding, really energetic young woman, Ms. Brooke Fund, is what it's pronounced. And she's really anxious to get started and we're anxious to have her here. Then the other two positions relate to the Buildings and Grounds Director opening. So through the process of hiring for the Buildings and Grounds Director, the committee decided that it would be in our best interest to redistribute the tasks of the Building and Grounds Director and the Assistant Buildings and Grounds Director into two new positions. We're going to call those positions the Facilities Director. And you have a recommendation for a candidate, Mr. Rod Hutchins, Arthur Hutchins. And we would like to have you address changing Mr. Harv Simden, our current employee, who is the Assistant Director. We'd like to change his title and his job description to become the Maintenance Director.
Okay. So we'd like to do these in three separate motions. So may we have the first motion for the Recreation Supervisor?
I move the board approve the letter of assignment to Ms. Brooke Fund, Recreation Supervisor, and welcome her to the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
And then a motion for the Facilities Director.
I move the board approve the letter of assignment to Mr. Arthur Rod Hutchins, Facilities Director, and welcome him to the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment for the sake of the public that these are not new positions per se. These are existing positions that have been reorganized. So this is not new from what we've had. They're just newly organized.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now a roll call vote, please?
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Epstein.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
That is approved. The next motion would be for the Maintenance Director.
I move the board approve the letter of assignment to Mr. Harvey Simden, Maintenance Director, and welcome him to his new position at the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. A roll call vote, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
And that motion is approved. And we welcome these people to the district and wish them well. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a co-curricular letter of assignment.
This is our new PE teacher, and we would like for her to become the seventh-grade girls' basketball coach.
I move the board approve a co-curricular letter of assignment to Ms. Sierra Curran for seventh-grade girls' basketball.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Roll call.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
And the last, or the next item is the approval of gifts.
So we're beginning the new list for 2018 with several gifts that were received.
Entertain a motion?
I move the board accept the following donations and thank the donors for their generous support for our students. A $100 anonymous donation toward student fees, a $100 anonymous donation toward student fees, a $100 anonymous donation to the mill, a $100 anonymous donation to the backpack program, a $100 anonymous donation to the school store, a $200 anonymous donation towards student food service accounts, a donation of coats, snow pants, and other winter wear estimated at $300 from Lynn Larson, a donation of winter wear and blankets estimated at $500 from Dennis and Rosemary Schwerm, and a donation of $483.30 from the Moravian Church to the backpack program.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And again, the community is, is really amazing in stepping forward. Yes?
I also, for the record, wanted to point out that there are lots more donations that happen at the individual school level that don't get this formal recognition. Lots of coats, hats, school supplies, things for the school store, the backpack program, you name it. Parents and community members and community groups are constantly donating their, you know, what they're able to donate to, to these programs. So this isn't it. This is the tip of that iceberg for our community.
That's a great point. Actually, by board policy, we recognize things at the board level if they are $100 or more. So there's countless gifts that are below that level that are greatly appreciated.
Okay. We can have a roll call vote, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
And that carries. And again, thanks to the community for their generosity. The next item would be the agenda items for our February meeting.
So just to review, at the January 29th meeting, we will be approving the open enrollment numbers for next year. We'll have a closed session to talk about administrative evaluations, and we'll also have the work session for facilities. And then in February, at that time, we will have our school calendar for you to approve. That's one of our benchmarks for looking at youth options. And we know that we will be looking at the show choir senior trip to New York for 2019 at that meeting as well.
And board members have anything to add? Okay. And then unless you want the fun to continue, we could entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.